Is that picking up the mic? Can everybody hear me? Good. Yeah, when we get the questions, we're gonna have a microphone here so that everybody else, it's not that I will be able to hear you, but so everybody else can hear. For those of you who haven't been aboard by any of my programs in the past, I really do encourage audience participation and interaction. If I'm going through something and a question occurs to you, it's because I am sufficiently clear, so please don't be afraid to ask the questions and what I think you mean by that. Because my job here is to impart, not what I want you to know, but it's to be able to answer your questions within the framework of a given topic to start with. And today's topic was defined as the powers and duties of planning boards. So let's start with that. How many of you are planning board members? One of the easiest way to ask this. How many of you are planning board official members? Oh, how many of you are both? Okay. Legislative board members? I've done this right. Code enforcement officers? Well, given the makeup of the audience, which is about as we expected, it's pronounced the planning boards, so I'll focus on the planning boards. I will make an effort to where there are distinctions between planning boards and zoning boards or appeals or other boards, I'll make an effort to make or draw distinctions. If I miss some, don't be afraid to stick your hand up and say, hey, dummy, you forgot about that. Sometimes that happens. Let's see, what else? Uh, we have the deduction. Oh, towns and villages. How many of you are associated with towns and villages? Cities? That's about it. Counties, I guess. You can ignore everything else. They don't make counties don't have something. Not in New York. So it's almost a 50-50 mix. Most of the statutes that I refer to this evening are equally applicable to villages and towns and cities. There are a few minor exceptions. Again, I will try and point those out. If I miss them, don't be afraid to mention it and tell me about it. So with that, let's begin. Wait, maybe I should ask this. I know that I should start with one of my jokes, but they're pretty hard to see. How many of you, how many of you have never heard me speak before? Is that enough to bother calling the joke?
Oh, yeah.
All right. We showed you my, those of you who are old hands, which one should I recall? The one about the lawyer or the one about the individual in the diplomatic service? Any preferences?
My favorite part about the bus ride.
About the bus ride? So you're talking about my favorite attorney joke? Okay. Let me set this up. I learned a long time ago, people, people learn a lot more and retain a lot more if they're having fun than when they're serious, concentrated. So with that in mind, since there was a skeleton that was, used to ride the train back and forth between Syracuse and Albany every day, very quickly, you know, hit on the anthrax and Syracuse, you know, Albany. He's jumping, he's serving for. So one day, they're sitting on the train reading the newspaper, managing his own business. They get somewhere around Blue Falls, and the train just jumps the track. It goes down the hill, runs along the river there for about a mile and a half, runs back up the hill and gets back on the track. The guy's a regular rider and he says, that's not supposed to happen. So he calls a conductor over who knew him quite well. He said, conductor, what just happened? He said, I was busy taking tickets, I didn't notice what you done. He said, well, the train just jumped the track, went down the hill, ran along the river for about a mile and a half, ran back up the hill and got back on the track. What happened? Well, conductor normally would just dismiss somebody that said that to him, but he knew this guy. So he said, well, let's go up and talk to the engineer. So they went up to talk to the engineer. They got up to the engineer and the fellow with the newspaper said to him, Mr. Engineer, what just happened? The train. He said, you noticed that, didn't you? And he said, well, yeah, I noticed. Train was supposed to stay on the track and this one just left the track, went down the hill, ran along the river for a mile and a half, ran back up the hill and got back on the track. What happened? Engineer said, well, I'll tell you. Driving the train, minding his own business, around the curve, and there, laying on the track, three-piece suitcase and all, was a lawyer. The guy with the newspaper said, wait, I don't get it. Why did he just run over the S O B? The engineer said, well, I couldn't do that. Soon as he got there and he jumped up, he ran down the hill, ran along the river for a mile and a half, then he ran back up the hill. Think about it, you know, and warm enough. And he usually sneaks up out of people too. All right, planning boards, powers and duties. First, let me draw a distinction that you probably should be aware of if you're not, and some of this is too elemental. Now, tell me and I'll kick it up a notch. Y'all remember from high school, unless of course you were educated in the last decade, in which case you've got no clue what I'm about to say. There were three branches of government: the executive, the judicial, and the legislative. All of you are members of the executive branch of government. You're not judges and you weren't elected, so you're members of the executive branch of government. But a distinguished distinction has to be made here between villages and towns. Towns only have two branches of government in New York, with the exception sort of of metropolitan towns. And I assume we don't have any metropolitan towns up here? Do you have any towns? Pound justice town that is in excess of 60,000? So we don't have any metropolitan towns. So towns don't have an executive branch government. The legislative branch, town board and town board members, perform the executive functions, which are all the departments, bureaus, highway department, parks department, you know, all the assessing department. All of those fall under the authority collectively for the most part of the town board. Villages, on the other hand, do have an executive head, and that's the mayor, and cities as well. The mayor is the chief executive officer. So you have to keep that distinction in hand. You all know that if you're a planning board member in a town, you're appointed by the town board. If you're a planning board member in a city or village, you are actually appointed by the mayor, subject to the confirmation of the legislative body. But the mayor has sole appointing power, and the mayor has the sole power of determining. However, all of you, building or town, are protected from arbitrary dismissal during your terms. You cannot be removed from office once you are duly qualified during your term, except for upon written charges given an opportunity to be heard. Are you all aware of that, huh? Trying to get some, you know, furrow brows and can't tell the light the way it is. So if you're, come on, there's one more question. How many of you are five-person boards? Be you a planning board or a CBA? How many are three? Seven? Interesting. Those, your term of office is coincidental with the number of board members of the authorized strength of your board. So if you, if the authorized strength of your board is three, each of you are appointed for a three-year term. And if you're doing it correctly, only one of your terms expires at the end of the year of the municipality, typically fiscal year. So villages end at the end of the fiscal, village fiscal year. Town terms end at the end of the town fiscal year, which also is a town year. Five years, same thing? You're appointed for each of you for five-year terms. You have followers on here? So how many of you have a situation where more than one of your terms comes due at the same year, January or May? Anybody? You guys have been doing a good job getting them straightened around, haven't you? I find this common and it's unfortunate. There's a reason for it, and that's the reason why I'm getting into this. Because you are members of the executive branch of government and because you cannot be removed from office except for cause after hearing, that's so that you will feel free to act independent of the wishes of the body that appointed you. And that is in fact a critical function of any administrative branch of government. Otherwise, you would have chaos. And I will avoid allowing too much of my personal political preferences to bleed into this program by making any suggestions. But where the politics clouds into the administrative process, corruption, cronyism, and a whole bunch of other bad things happens. In other words, as long as you're administering some regulations that blinders on the political one here, the process works just fine. Go ahead, question.
You said if there's seven board members, does that mean your term is supposed to be seven years?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm only two years, I'm an alternate.
Well, alternates are different. Okay? Alternates are not actually board members. The town, the state legislature just recently added the alternate provision, primarily because municipalities were having trouble. They did it coincidentally with adding the training obligation for planning and zoning board official members. And frankly, administering these laws has become so complicated and so difficult that you can't just expect that they're laying it off the street and have him or her effectively administer these regulations without understanding how they work. Part of the reason I suspect why most of you are in the nineties is to fulfill some of your training obligations. Well, because of the potential lag between retiring, resigning individuals, people that die in office and so on, and the trained individual demonstrated a weakness in the system. So the legislature authorized municipalities to create alternates, not only to have extended supply of trained individuals, but also to deal with conflicts of interest. And that was the principal purpose, the recited legislative purpose. The secondary purpose was to have trained individuals who has already demonstrated an interest in doing the job and have, over the years, experience of training and can step right into the field shoes, either because of the Catholic or because of the Lakers. But when and if you're appointed to the board as a member, it will be for a seven-year term or, and this is where people start losing track. Here's the way to say it. Each member, each of you out there, wears a little secret tattooed number on the top of your forehead that only the town board can read, and it is your expiration year. And each of you are different on a given board. So if my expiration year is 2020, 2023, but I choose to resign or leave or whatever, and you get appointed to take my place, your first term expires 2023 because you're filling my slot. Okay? So it may only be a four-year term, your initial term. If you're subsequently reappointed, then it's for a seven-year term. And the obvious reason for this, if you think about it, is so that no given political board will at least statutorily have the ability to throw out or replace, you know, en masse, planning board as only board official members. You know, they're gonna have to go through one real cycle before they will have had the opportunity to replace each new board member. Do you hear? No questions on this one? Chairmanships are at pleasure appointments. Even though you may be appointed for a year by resolution of the board, it is actually an at-pleasure appointment. The appointed body typically either the mayor and board trustees or the supervisor and town board can replace you at any time, for any reason or no reason, not as a board member, but only as chair. You follow what I'm saying? So here in your first year of seven-year term, and supervisor decides that they want to have a new chair, they can do that, and they don't have to give a reason. They have that authority. Another business exception. It is not required, although it is advisable and there's nothing wrong with it, having the chair sign the oath of office book as chair. But the oath of office book implies, not because he or she is chair, but because he or she is a member of the board. And every member of the board must sign the oath of office book. And how many of you are on your second or third or fourth term? Have each of you signed the oath book at the commencement of the current term? Well, if you haven't, check it and do so. Let me tell you a horror story. Yeah, I guess it's one I can tell, but I can't actually tell you who. The town of Salina. You ever heard of the town of Salina? Just outside of St. Serge's? I was the planning board attorney for the town of Salina for 20 odd years. And it was one of these towns that had some volatile, fluid makeup. One particular election cycle, enough of the board changed so that the incoming board decided they wanted to replace all the planning board members. And, well, first they wanted to replace the planning board attorney. That was me. The board, with whom I had served for 15 or 20 years, I don't remember the exact number at the time, said, uh-huh, we don't want them. Now, here's a very interesting thing, maybe you know, maybe you don't know. Planning boards are the only body, administrative body, in the town or village that has the right to select its own counsel, its own professional engineer or other professionals, and its own secretary. The town board does not have a lawful right to tell you who will be your attorney, your engineer, or your secretary. Yes?
So you're saying that if the town has their attorney, the planning board and the planning, if the town has their attorney, like we have...
I don't get it.
If we have a town attorney for the town that the town board chooses, the planning board can still have their own attorney separate from the town attorney?
Yes, ma'am. That's the technical idea. Did y'all hear the question? So the town board has a town attorney, and the town board wants the town attorney to be the planning board attorney. Do you mean that we as the planning board can say, we don't want that attorney, we want our own? The answer is absolutely.
I know that.
It's a catch. It's the system of checks and balances. You can only do so within, or only pay within the appropriation made by the town board for that purpose.
So if there's nothing in our town's budget for a separate attorney for the planning board, then we wouldn't be able to do that?
No? Did y'all hear the question? She said, well, you mean if there's nothing in the town budget identifying the planning board attorney's fees, then we wouldn't be able to do that? And the answer is, no, that's not quite true. Because if the town attorney's... Should I digress? Do y'all know the difference between the town attorney and an attorney for the town? I'll get to that in a second. For now, it's just called a town attorney. I'll clarify that. If the town attorney's job duty includes providing legal advice with the planning board, then some portion of his compensation must be earmarked for that planning board function. Now, how much is up to negotiation between the attorney and the town board? But again, reasonableness plays a role. How many meetings does he attend with the CBA? How many with the town board? How many with the planning board? How much time is put in? But a reviewing court would in fact take the town's total allocations for town attorney's fees and would make an appropriate allocation for that particular budget year and would appropriate that amount or order the town to appropriate that amount for that purpose. By the way, having said all this, it's interesting and I want you to understand it because you then begin to understand the degree of freedom of action that you have. But I don't recommend you get into a fight with the town board. I've had several of them over my career, and they're not fun. Okay? Because the town board controls the person. But, but yes, ma'am, you are free to select an attorney of your own and if you can get that attorney to work for free...
Have attorneys ever worked for free?
Yes, ma'am, I did for four years. That kind of a case. The town board refused to allocate money the second year around, and I said, fine, I'll work for free. They said, you will not? I said, yes, I will. And I did. Because I wasn't about to let those SOBs get away with it. And I'm stubborn as hell.
What happened after four years?
They adopted a local, it's interesting. They adopted a local law, which on its face purported to deprive the planning board of the authority to appoint, in the terms of its own choosing, in direct contravention of the town law. I went to my client and said, I'll be happy to take this out to the Supreme Court and wish me to, because they can't do that. That is, they're superseding a state statute without broken authority. The planning board at that point at times said, look, you worked for four years for free. We're not gonna make you go through that. And I said, okay. So I wondered why they would just go night and day. But I wouldn't have been willing to let it if they didn't want me to. But I can't do something my client doesn't want to simply because in advance of my personal interests. You follow what I'm saying? So I had to let it be. I'm still waiting for the right case in some other municipality that I don't like and I'm interested to challenge that. But so far as I know, that's the only town in the state of New York that's ever done it. Town of Tompkins, by the way. And now that I become... Oh, I started to tell you about the town of Salina. That's what got sidetracked, sorry. So we're in the town of Salina. I've been there a number of years. I asked every member of the board. We fought through January, we had a battle through February, a battle in March. By the time we got to April, somebody got smart and checked the oath of office and learned that while every member of the planning board was on their second, third, or fourth term, none of them had signed the oath of office book beyond their first term, thinking that was all they had to do. I didn't learn about it until about 25 minutes before the meeting was supposed to start at the town board. I had got on the telephone and started calling all of my clients, the planning board members, and saying, you better get your buddy there and sign. But none of them were able to do so. So at that meeting, the town board appointed, they had got the five person board, appointed five people as planning board members. The clerk was there with the oath book, they signed it right then and there. They then declared an emergency meeting. Two days later, appointed a new attorney. Then three of them promptly resigned, and three of the former board members promptly got reappointed. So you could, those kinds of political games can be played more than pity. That's the only reason I tell you this story. By the way, I've been acting as the planning board attorney for the town of Salina, have that the last 24 years. Yes?
You're saying a planning board member like who's been halted office for seven years doesn't have to sign that planning board oath of office book every year for seven years? They just sign it one year, the year you're appointed?
Did y'all get the question? She said, if you're appointed for seven years, do you have to sign the oath of office book every year? Or will the first signature at the beginning of the seven-year term be sufficient for the seven-year term? The answer is yes, it will. One signature for the seven years for the fighter. Having said that, however, it doesn't hurt if you wish to sign again. There's nothing wrong with it. But you do not lose, your seat does not become vacant based on the failure to sign for the second year of the seven-year term. Or a third year or so.
What if the town never provides you with the oath?
You will compel them, and if that doesn't work, you can actually go to the county clerk or call me up on the phone and I will use somebody who's set of brains. Then the town clerk or the village clerk is required by statute, is part of the statutory duties of an elected or appointed town or village clerk to maintain, to maintain an oath book. And it's not just maintaining an oath book. They have to be issued in sequential order, just like a checkbook. If you've got it voided, you've got to keep it numbered, void it, and use the next number for the next one. Stop and think about why. Think about that. People can place in evidence with them. Unless they're all sequentially numbered. Start getting people to sign out-of-order numbers and then pretend somebody didn't sign. Easy way to get somebody else. Because the law says that if you've been appointed and you don't take the oath of office book within 30 days of the commencement of your term, it's not voidable. The seat is vacant, automatic. They don't have to give you notes, they don't have to type. You can just appoint somebody else because there's nobody sitting in that seat if the oath of office book was not in fact signed.
Well, 30 years, I've signed conflict statements every year, but I've never signed the oath.
Well, I recommend that you, I recommend that you do so.
Because they don't like them.
In fact, you're one of the few people I know who's signed a conflict, which is also required. Now, maybe you've done a far better job up here than we did down in New York. I don't know, you tell me, I can't tell you. If there's one or two municipalities that actually have a conflict statement on behalf of every board member on record, I'd be flattered. It's probably because zoning plan came to the North Country much later than it did, and it came at a time when people were actually concerned about things like conflicts of interest. You know, back 44, 45 years ago when I started this, nobody much worried too much about that stuff. You know, it has been an evolving process. Speaking of that, how many of you ever heard of G M L, County Municipal Law, Section 809? Not 239. Y'all know about 239 as the county planning agency referral stuff? Y'all know about 239, that's the county planning agency referral stuff? Okay? GML 809. Ah, we're gonna have some fun. Shall I shout? Every case you had has been revealed. And every applicant committed a misdemeanor by coming in front of your board. That's fact. GML 809 says that every applicant for a variance, a subdivision, a site plan, a special permit, or any other with a various and sundry land use approvals must sign a GML 809 disclosure statement. Statement that he or she, or it, if it's a company, has no knowledge of, or if so stated who, of municipal officers, employees, I forget the whole language, has an interest in their application. You in there? I say it another way, I'm an applicant, I'm coming in front of your board for a site plan approval. I'm required to sign a document that says, "I know of no officer, member of the planning board, employee of the town that has an interest in my application." And that includes their brothers, their sisters, their mothers, their spouses, their children, their grandchildren. It's all laid out in the statute, what it has to say. And if I don't do it, I'm going to be a misdemeanor.
Where does the applicant find a GML 809?
Good question. I mean, other than in the general municipal law section 809, that's where it is. But where you should be able to obtain it is from your town or village clerk. And I would recommend that each of you, when you get back there, ask your town or municipal clerk if they have a copy of an 809 disclosure form. And if not, ask them politely if they would like to contact their municipal attorney. They have to prepare an 809 disclosure form. And just like the application in the short form AAF, or long form as the case may be, it probably should be handed to the applicants by the zoning enforcement officer at the same time that the application is given to, for completion. Because it should come back to the board, or to your zoning enforcement officer, as part of that submission.
Why isn't that part of the process to begin with?
It is. 809 requires it, if you. Like, your real question is, how could so many municipalities ignore it? I don't think it's intentional. I think they just don't know about it. I've mentioned it a couple of these conferences over the years, but I don't typically remember all of these things. But that's one that popped into my head tonight as we were on the floor, and it is required.
So that form should be ready with the application you get.
Exactly.
Does New York State have a form, like a...
The statute, depends on the statute book that they have. I don't, I haven't seen one in my copy of the statute book, except that it does say, right in paragraph two, exactly what the certification has to say. So all you would do is just type up what the statute says has to be certified to on a form, and then put a line for signature. That really doesn't do it.
I have one question.
Please.
If someone applied for a special use permit, they did not sign an 809, it's not in the file, is that special use permit invalid?
There has never been any litigation, to the best of my knowledge. At least, well, at least let me qualify that by saying if it were raised timely, it may very well be grounds for vacating the approval. May, very well, I'm choosing my words very carefully. Because courts tend to be sticklers on procedure. However, I am not aware of any cases where that has been litigated. I can only tell you what the statute effect says in plain, ordinary, everyday English.
What's a timely manner? What is it a timely manner?
Typically thirty days, if it's a, if it's a special permit, it's the statute limitations. So most statute limitations is thirty days, there are a few that are four months. But most are thirty days, so for our purposes, thirty days. See, once thirty days goes by, from the filing of the decision of the board in the office of the municipal clerk, the actions of the board become, for the most part, become unassailable. But we all wear that. So you grant a variance, or a special permit, or a subdivision, or a site plan, your final determination is filed in the office of the municipal clerk and date stamped. It also has to be sent to the applicant, there's a five-day notice of provision there. Thirty days later, and that's calendar thirty days, except for holidays and so on, they cannot sue over that rule. The statute of limitations borrows the lawsuit. Now, how far in the niggery should I get? This, this municipality is still ongoing, shall remain nameless. But let me give you a scenario that just occurred, and the common sense advice I gave the board. Because so much of this stuff is common sense. Let me actually digress even further and say it this way. Each of you are officers of the municipality for which you work, and you are sworn to try to do what you believe to be right within the framework of the law, vested in your ability. But none of you should have a personal vested interest in the outcome of any given application. Accordingly, the threat of being sued is not personal. It's the board at that is being challenged. It's the decision that was made. And ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of determinations that reverse your decisions are what we call remand. You know what that means? That means they said, "You messed up, Lord, do it again." That's all it says. It doesn't say you can't do it. They may say, "This procedural thing you did wrong, so don't do that again." But they can't tell you that you cannot repeat exactly what you just did, only do it right procedurally. I'll explain here. Okay? So while I am not suggesting in any way, shape, or form that you abrogate your responsibility, or ignore your responsibility, to do things the right way, you should always do that, to the best of your ability. That's what you're sworn to do, in essence. However, I have seen boards tie themselves in knots, get themselves sick over whether they're going to mess up some procedural aspect. You shouldn't. Okay? How many of you get paid more than twenty thousand dollars a year in the town board? Exactly my point. Okay? Who would in their right minds do your job? If you are personally at risk? You should do it right, pay attention, follow the advice of your counsel. But don't tie yourselves in knots over this stuff. There is anything you can, that you can do that you, other than have your hand in the cookie jar. If your hand is in the cookie jar, you're a deep doodoo. You know what I'm talking about here, right? If you don't do that, it doesn't make any difference what you do, you personally will not be in a problem. When you can't think what you feel like. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying follow the process as best you can. You learn of new things that you didn't know, don't go, "Oh my God, what about the site plan or special permit we did last month?" Okay? And I was going to illustrate that, punctuate that by point. There's municipalities which I represent the planning board, and somebody else represents the legislative body. They approached the town board, the town board amended the zoning regulations to allow a certain use in a certain district. Had the public hearing, the pub, the pub, passed the law. Then, one of the property owners who's property was owned this way, made the application to the planning board for a site plan approval. Because now the use that he wanted to do was lawful. That triggered the provision of sending a notice to the adjacent neighbors. Now, while they sent the notice out, the town board did on the zone change, they amended to the code, the neighbors, nobody showed up, nobody had a thing to say about it. You with me? Is this scenario song from him? But when they got the notice that said, "Mr. Smith is applying to do thus and such on his property", now they came by the bucket full to the planning board, raised the whole way up. At which point I was requested to look into the procedures used by the town board for the zoning ordinance amendment. I looked into those procedures, and I advised them, although they weren't my client, I was requested to do so. I advised them that, in my opinion, there were several fatal procedural flaws with the adoption of the law that allowed this use to now be permissible in the particular zoning district involved. You with me here? You follow me on this? So meanwhile, the application is pending in front of the planning board. Now, here's where common sense and this whole concept of, "Don't be scared to death about this stuff." Once I came to that recognition, I sent to collect the planning board the applicant, the neighbors, and the planning board. But there's an application pending. As a technical matter, the law has been changed because it was filed. However, the statute of limitations on challenging that law has not expired. The opponents have a lawyer, and the opponents have said, "We're about to file a law, a lawsuit challenging the validity of that law." Now, we can sit back and go through the process of the planning board considering this thing. While that lawsuit is going on, then when that lawsuit concludes that the town board messed up the procedure, anything the planning board does gets vacated because now the authority on which they were acting is no longer valid. You see that convolution there? So I said, "The simple solution is this. Y'all are here, the audience is there. Let's go through the process, but let's table it. Find out whether the town board is willing to reconsider the local law that they already adopted once before. And if they are, we'll let them go through that process this time correctly. They may reach the same conclusion they reached before, they may not. But in either event, the planning board will then be informed of their actions in a manner which we know is bulletproof. Whichever way to go, approve or just to go with the law. Follow me here? You see how it works together? So we're still in the process of going through that. The town board will very soon make up its mind whether it wishes to readapt the same law that they read, that they adapted three or four months earlier. If they do, then the planning board will be free to proceed to consider the site plan application. The other thing that I include when I talk to my clients is, it's another way to sort of say the same thing. This process that we're involved in is an applicant-driven process. Understand what I'm saying here? It's applicant-driven. With the exception of zoning board of appeals, where the code enforcement officer may be citing somebody for a violation, and they're being required to go in front of the CBA for a week. Everything else you do, subdivision, site plan, special permits, those are applicant-driven. There's somebody out there that owns pretty strong, and wants to do something. So they make an application. Okay? They, the applicants, are the one whose pocketbook is at risk. Not the planning board. Not the town board. It's the applicant that's at risk. Here's how I handle that on behalf of my clients. Where I've got a contested matter, there's a group of residents or whatever that are opposed, and an applicant that's in favor, and there's some question as to the wisdom of a particular determination made. It often comes down to how well the reasoning and the rationale is articulated in your resolutions. You know, why do you conclude that there won't be a traffic impact of this particular proposal? Or facts upon which would you rely? Where there is an applicant and equal sides between the applicant and the opponents, I sit there as the municipal attorney and I say, "Look, we are stakeholders, we're the planning board. We're in a vested interest in this case, one or the other. Our job is to administer certain rules and regulations to the best of our ability. We're going to make up our own minds based on the evidence. But applicant, if you wish to propose a resolution for our consideration, hand it in." But I said the same thing to the opponents, that they've got a counsel. If you guys see these facts differently, propose a resolution, submit it to the planning board for its consideration, that will be part of the record. Then the planning board will look at those and evaluate them within the rules as they understand them, and reach to them fully. Now, why would I do that? Because if a lawsuit is likely to ensue, and if both sides are represented by attorney, that is very likely, then we, the municipality, are going to be looking to the applicant's counsel to carry the bulk of the litigation expenses. They're the one at risk. They're the one that gained a roos, you follow me? Or the opponents in the event of reversal, you see what I'm saying? Let the people who have a dog in a fight. Now, that's not to say that the planning board's counsel shouldn't take the side of whichever side is supporting the action of the planning board. You follow what I'm saying? But there's a big difference in the cost between doing a "me too" set of papers and actually doing all the legal research, all that kind of stuff. And I'm all about trying to save my client, the town, the money. So it's the applicant that's at risk, and if you're doing your best to do it right. See, I'd like to know this turned another way. In the town of Sissons, not too many years ago, maybe fifteen or eighteen, a site plan came in. Simple little site, it was very close to it. We, in the town of Clay, we actually have an engineer on staff, and they do automatic report to the planning board. So it's part of the routine process. We get input from an engineer on the environmental issues, and the technical issues. We get input from staff, all handed to the planning board before they consider it. So this was a relatively simple site plan. There was no opposition, even though we have a public hearing, which by the way, you know you're not required to run necessarily that segment. I get that I meant to. So, relatively simple, no issues. So, relatively simple, no issues. We did an environmental significance determination that was technically deficient. The Sproulmark case and others, say, that ignored a case with negative declaration for secret purposes. Y'all with me here? I'm not using, I'm not speaking French, right? You all understand the terms I'm talking about. Please, I'm not giving a thesis here. I don't know your level of understanding. Y'all know what seeker is? Okay, you know what a neged is? So we went through the process and issued a neged. But we didn't read each question for the record. We didn't individually answer each question as the Sproulmark case says we're required to do. We just concluded that there would be an adverse environment a little bit. Now, it was the correct determination, but it was procedurally faulty. You with me here, Sproulmark? We went along, in fact, on the happy end of the next case. Low ball, twenty-nine days later, a lawsuit shows up. Somebody's challenging the adequacy of our determination based on the failure to do a thorough and full environmental analysis. I go to my board meeting and they're all apoplectic about it. "Oh my God, we got sued." I looked at the papers, I said, "All we're alleging is a procedural problem with seeker. You guys made the wrong decision." "Well, no." I said, "Well then, it cost the applicant", who by the way, happened to be a competing drugstore owner on the other side of the street, "that's a bag." I said, "It's probably costing three to five thousand dollars to file this lawsuit so far." So, with your permission, I'll write in the bag and say, "Oops, you're right. We agreed, vacate the decision. Meanwhile, we'll put that on our agenda for next month. I will have a detailed analysis available for you to analyze the adverse or potential adverse environmental impacts on this site plan. You will go through it on record, justify your conclusions, and reapprove the site plan." And that's exactly what happened. The town spent a sum total of zero dollars defending it. The applicant spent about six thousand dollars, by thirty days reprieve because we reapproved it the next month. No lawsuit filed after it because we doubted our rights and cost our fees. See what I'm saying here? So, I'm trying to put Article 78 to perspective. I'm saying to you, you should never be afraid of Article 78 as long as you can look yourself in the mirror and say you followed the process to the best of your ability. Now.
Are you supposed to read your seeker at every site plan, short or long?
No, you're being... Okay, so you said, "Are you supposed to read all of your seeker, short or long, in every case?" Is that a characterization of the question? The answer is, yep. Each question. And answer each question. And then based on the answers to those questions, formulate a motion to either issue a positive or negative declaration based on those answers. Now, how many of you, there's more than five cases a night at a meeting? Anybody? How about, I'm average, how about more than two? One is the average? Should I say this? I don't want you all to walk out and say, "Boy, this guy was making attention to law at all." Remember I told you I represent the town of Clay? It's hard to be darn stupid. I had been looking for you out here. Today, it's relatively small. We generally have no more than eight or nine cases down there. Given nights generally, we meet twice a month. Back in the old days, we'd have fifteen to twenty cases a night. Public hearings, okay? We were there until one, two o'clock in the morning, twice a month. To do what Sproulmark requires, reading each and every question, answering them on the record, taking a roll call vote out of the question, we would need to do four meetings a month. And even then, we might not be able to finish the volume of work. But remember, in Clay, it's the crucialized is a professional review by an impartial engineer who reports on every case to the planning board about their notion of the environmental consequences associated with any given application. And I assure you that when federal weapons are involved, or DEC weapons, or a complicated SWIP is going to be involved, we don't disco and then I'll do it. Okay? Because we're taking our responsibility to address the environment seriously. But on the routine, simple site plans that have all been thoroughly engineered, we actually, in the town of Clay, one of the most common motions due here is, "I move the adoption of a form T D C when you made that." I second. All in favor? Done. Now, is that procedurally correct? No, it is not. Does my board know that that's not procedurally correct? Yes, they do, because I've made it very clear to them. I'm gonna digress here. Significant place, nineteen seventy-seven, November first decided law nineteen seventy-seven. Somewhere around nineteen eighty-nine, I was asked to do a program, I'm still a little bit late, I mean, I've only been a lawyer two years. I was asked to do a program in Rochester for the Monroe County Power Association. The program was entitled, "Seeker for the Extraordinary." Now, I'm doing a one-man show to a bunch of lawyers in a foreign committee, foreign city, who are experts because it's seeker for the extra. Trust me to say, I was terrified. Because seeker only went out two years. Nobody knew about seeker. I certainly didn't know a lot seeker. So, I get to this room and there's probably sixty, seventy lawyers in the room. And I always like to start off with some kind of humorous anecdote if I can think of one. So on the way, I had an inspiration. So, after I was introduced, I looked over at the chalkboard and I turned my back to the audience and I said, "Seeker." S. E. K. That's what I was expecting. E. R. And I turn around and they're all writing it now. So I took a deep breath and said, "Okay, there's no more an expert than I am." Well, that's kind of the process of seeker. Seeker is required, is designed to ensure that in every case you review the potential environmental consequences of what's in front of you. They're not saying to be a flaming liberal tree hopper. They're saying, "Use your common sense, look at the facts, analyze it, and reach a reasonable conclusion. Other alternatives for this applicant to do that won't have a consequence. Or is this the only way to do it? And then you gotta measure the worth. I mean, it's a, it's a process where you get... How many of you ever had to go through a type-one process? With a draft environmental back statement? Does one? They're very rare, and frankly, they should be rare. Because most environmental issues that arise in the routine planning board process can be engineered or designed out of a project. You know, you look at the lighting issues, you look at bird killers, and see if there isn't a way by design modification to eliminate the significance of that issue, whatever it happens to be. That's what seeker is supposed to be about. It's not supposed to be a weapon that's drawn like a sword of, you know, that's slicing half your way through either neighbors or applicants. And it's certainly not supposed to be a sword of dock plates hanging over everybody's head. It's supposed to be a reasonable review of potential environmental consequences that are both severe and manifest. Not purely speculative. And you look to standard wherever you can. Question, where?
Is it still true that seeker requires any development within two hundred feet of a waterway, a public waterway, to go through a full review?
Your question is, "Is it still required that any development proposal within two hundred feet of a waterway goes through a full review?" First, I am not aware of any such requirement, period. There may very well be. In your local regulations, the local implementing regulations, some provision that identifies as a type-one action certain kinds of proceedings within so many feet of a public water course. So I can't say that. What I will say to you is this. Are you all aware of... Shall we get into seeker a little bit? Is that a subject that I'm going to run here and tell you guys what you want to order? So that's what I'm going to teach you. Is seeker something that y'all want to talk about? Yes, no?
Yeah, I like seeker.
I mean, I don't want to push you to sleep.
Yes, E.
Pardon?
Public hearing.
And public hearings, okay. We'll get to the point of talking about public hearings next, all right? Seeker. Seeker, state environmental quality review, sometimes called Seek ROT, state environmental review act. It is laid out in the environmental conservation law. However, very rarely do we actually refer to the law because a set of regulations implemented the seeker law without. You've probably heard somebody say, "Six NYC R R, Part Six, One, Seven," right? All heard that? That's the seeker acts. The seeker acts start by taking the whole world, and I, by the way, I exaggerate a little bit here to make a point. If a municipality wants to blow its collective nose, it's subject to seeker. Any discretionary act of a governmental agency is subject to seeker. That includes theoretically, opening and closing a meeting, recessing. If it's a discretionary act, it's subject to seeker. Now, I want to set that in for a minute. You got the notion? Every discretionary act is subject to seeker. Now, does that mean you gotta do a seeker determination before you would recess the meeting? No. It simply means that you start with the presumption that every act is subject to seeker. Now we're going to start eliminating things from seeker, whole, part, broad brush. Routine continuing agency administration is exempt from seeker. So at least you can open the closing meeting, you can adjourn, you can recess, you can do motions generally. Just motions procedural. Yes, I would like to report Mr. Smith. Those are exempt. And they're sort of excluded. And these are all, by the way, laid out in the regulations. And then, that's exclusively exempt. And that takes care of most discretionary decisions of governmental agencies. As it did with site plans and special permits and subways that are really discretionary. Takes care of the business stuff. Then, the what's left of the whole world of possible discretionary decisions, adopting a budget, buying a new firefight, banning a site plan approval, you know, a number of other kinds of discretionary approvals, fit into three categories. There are categories that you've heard, but maybe you don't really know that they are. Category one is type-one. It's actually type-one list. And I emphasize that, as you'll see live in a minute. Category two is type-two list. Category three is unlisted. It's not on the type-one list. And it's not on the type-two list, so it is therefore unlisted. Now, what is type-one? Type-one is big things. You're all aware of the six million square foot warehouse facility being built in the town of Clay? That's a type-one. Big projects. Those are type-ones. Now, there's more to it than that. You actually have to go to the regulations, Six NYC R R, Part Six, One, Seven, and read the list of what is and what is not a type-one act. Or your attorney, or your engineer, and advise you. Likewise, there is a type-two list. For CPA members, I have followed you lately. Individual residential side yard setback variances are type-two. Type-two are those things which by their very nature will never have a significant adverse environmental impact. So if something is type-two, you don't have to go through reading all the questions. You just identify it as type-two. Boom, seeker's satisfied. Now, if it's type-one, that's also simple, believe it or not, initially. All you have to do is say, "Oops, this is type-one." What you're basically saying is, "Time out, everything's going to stop for six months." And we're going to go into this whole other chapter over here called satisfying seeker. And that's all we're going to do for the next six months or a year. Or two, or four, or ten. Okay, depending upon how it's complex. So, type-one, type-two. See? Type-two, nothing to it. Type-one, you're hooked at the hip to your town attorney for some period of time. Because it's impossible for me to go through all the permutations and combinations of that one action in a form like that. That's a subject for a two-hour lecture all the way up. So what about the rest, the unlisted? That represents the vast majority of what you folks do under the regulations. Most of them. Site plans, special permits, subways are unlisted. Now, under the regulations, any unlisted, I'm getting to your question, any unlisted action can be submitted with a short environmental assessment form. Y'all know the difference between the short EAF and the long EAF? Other than the fact that it's thirteen ways of differentiating. The short and the long. Any unlisted action can start with a short form EAF, Part One being filled out by the advocate. Now, having said that, any board can look at, any unlisted action, look at the adequacy of the short form EAF to the facts presented and conclude that they wish not to proceed in the absence of a long form EAF. You had that right. So if there's something about this project that makes them... Here's the negative example. it, and you think you want more data before you really start analyzing the environmental issues, you are completely free to require the applicant to prepare part one of a long form EAF, even though it's clearly an unlisted action. Now, if it's a type one action, remember, that's the big projects? You must start with a long form. However, it must be applicant that break down. He knows it's a type one, and you're going to get a heck of a lot more in your initial submission than a simple EAF. You're going to get a book that he's already prepared. By the way, the books that we got when that project I was just talking about in Clay, there's two of them, they snapped that fall. Now, I guarantee you they spent 75, 100,000 dollars preparing that for us. Very thorough, very detailed. But that's what a type one, complicated type one action calls for. Now, so far, SEACER's been simple, believe it or not. We've only talked about the initial classification of the actions. Now, we start getting into how do you process this? Now, have y'all heard of the difference between an interested and an involved agency? Any of those words seem familiar? Please, I need some feedback, guys. Some of you know the difference, some of you don't? Besides, I'm sorry, I put you asleep. Does any of you know the difference between involved or interested agency? But it's important period, in some cases. An involved agency is one which has some form of approval, involving the overall project. Let me give you an example, subdivision, where public water, public sewer is available, okay? The planning boards involved, they're going to be an involved agency. They fund, carry out, or approve the subdivision. If you're going to be talking about extending municipal sewers, the town board is going to be involved in the formation of the sewer district. The county water authority, if you have one, may be involved. The department of transportation, either county, state, or town, may be involved on the curb cut. The DEC might be involved, if there's a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Each of these agencies has some approval jurisdiction over some aspect of this project. That doesn't mean it's type one. It simply means that there are multiple agencies involved in this unlisted action. And those agencies are involved agencies. Now, here's what gets tricky. The planning board is typically one of the first agencies that receives the application from the get-go. They start with you guys, usually. Unlisted actions can be decided by each individual agency. So, I just gave you a scenario where there's four or five other involved agencies, right? Each one of them can make their own environmental significance determination when it comes in front of them, and those determinations can differ in conclusions, because they're all individual. What I do is I say to my client, ask the applicant, in a multiple agency situation, does the applicant wish to coordinate the SEACER review? Remember, the applicant, it's an applicant-driven process. Like I said, so much of this comes back to the common sense stuff. See, applicants is a risk. You're going to be meeting next month whether he's there or not, okay? So, doesn't matter to you. Ask the applicant, do you wish to coordinate review? If the applicant says yes, then you ask yourself the next question. Do we, the planning board, wish to act as the lead agency? Now, the lead agency is the one that has the statutory responsibility to actually make the final SEACER determination. So if you don't want that responsibility, then don't volunteer to be the lead agency. But if you wish to have the control of the overall project, then for an unlisted action, if the applicant requests it, or if you wish to do coordinated review, the next step is for you to then send out a letter to all of the other involved agencies as identified by the applicant on part one. I get that is so nice, too. Well, we think we owe a review of what this is. You say, yeah, maybe. So if you think he did, you have to send a copy of this letter to him. But understand, the applicant provided that list. If the applicant blew it, and he ends up having to get a SEACER determination from another agency that was not given a notice, what do we care? You follow me? Have I, did I get you way off here? And I saw some throw around show. Right, you're right. The very next step, no, under those circumstances, we don't. If he didn't provide you with the name, uh, okay? Then you proceed to do your SEACER determination. When he gets ready to try and build and get into the project, he'll have to go to that department. He'll say, well, you haven't done SEACER yet. And they'll say, well, yes, we did. You did SEACER with a coordinated review, but we didn't get a notice. If you didn't get a notice, you're not bound by the decision, follow me? And that agency could reverse the whole process. You're right. So, that's why I said the applicant's driven. Now, all I'm going to say about type one is, if it's type one, you must coordinate. All I'm saying. So back to the other, you can or not. You don't really care, so ask the applicant, do you wish to coordinate? If he says yes, or get, or she. Then the next step is for you to send out a letter to each of those involved agencies saying, we wish to be the lead agency. Are you guys okay with that? They have 30 days within which to write back to you and say, yeah, okay, or uh-uh, we want, we, the DEC, want to be the lead, okay? That will rarely, if ever, happen. But if it does, there is a process involved going to the commissioner of the DEC to reconcile the conflict between the agencies. Doesn't happen often, but it happens. So, assuming all of the other agencies send back a letter saying 30 days, 30 days, 30 days, 30 days, time, then you are in a position to be able to proceed with your environmental analysis, okay? That's a real simple, fun, real steps of the SEACER process. But like any other administrative process, it's simply common sense, line with facts, making reasonable judgments. What was I going to get out of there? Oh, public hearings. Public hearings. I'm going to get very interested in rules, regulations, governing public hearings. Okay, get it moving. Frankly, there are minimum number of rules. First, a public hearing has to have the public's notes, the ultimate. Actually, the courts have the function. Uh, are you secondary or a good chair? Good chair? Give her a chance. No, you don't have to do it. Uh, where are we with side marker? This lady is the chair of the planning board, and she says she sends out the public notices. What I said, where is, get rid of that, have one of the administrative people come and come with her. The procedural stuff for any application, any board, zoning board reviews, special permits, whatever, should, to the maximum extent possible, be done by administrative people and not have to await the monthly or semi-monthly meetings of the board. That's my personal judgment. I didn't say law. Listen carefully to my words. I said ought to be handled administratively. There should be no questions. It's one from column A, one from column B, you know, they develop a SEACER form, application form, they submit the copy of the necessary maps, and other supporting documentation. The codes officer, the clerk, or whoever it is within your municipality that handles that stuff on a daily basis collects it. There should be a procedure coming for how many copies? That person can also make a determination, is this on the county or state highway? Does it require a GML 239 in general? If it does, give an extra copy and send out the GML 239. If you ask your highway department, or your police department, or your fire department for input, send that stuff out administratively. There's no reason not to, okay? And it should just be performed on. Nobody's making any judgments of case at this point. It's just dotting i's across c t's, okay? One of the things I can tell you when I wear my developers hat, representative developers, that I find infinitely frustrating, is those municipalities that reserve the right of a planning board, or a zoning board of appeals, to determine the completeness of the application before proceeding. First off, it's not statutorily authorized. The statute says upon receipt of an application. The statute doesn't say upon receipt of an application, having all the nuts and bolts the town board, or the zoning board, or the planning board decided to include in it, including the waste size of their great area of earth on. It's got nothing to do with the process, okay? And to use it as a means to delay access to the process is, in my own opinion, unconscionable, okay? Access to the process is the critical hurdle. I didn't say you got to decide it the same night you're hearing, or that you can't adjourn the hearing as necessary because you need more information. I said there's no reason to postpone commencement of the process. That's all. I've got a case now going on in the town through. This is now, what is it, November? I made my application in May. I haven't been in front of the board yet, scheduled for next week. Believe me when I say that, my client is not happy. That's a very frustrating process for a developer, and it gives your municipality a really bad name. Here's another issue. Where are public hearings required? Well, when should we schedule a public hearing? Should we have the applicant in and have him bring us up to speed on an application? Do we notice at all before we open the public hearing? Where are public hearings required? Now, here I got to be a little bit subjective. Let me talk about what a public hearing is. How many of you think it's an opportunity for the public to ask questions and get answers about the project? I'm serious, be honest. It's not. Public hearing is a one-way information flow from the public to the board. Now, to the applicant, from the public to the board. Now, having said that, to be meaningful, the public really should have some notion of what the application is all about. How can they tell you what their opinion is in a meaningful way if they haven't got a clue what the application is all about? Now, by the way, none of this is law at per se. The whole of the hearing is. Now, how you proceed, and the order in which you proceed, and how the chair conducts the hearing, and what rules you utilize, that's all art. That's up to what works for your municipality. So, these things I'm talking about now are merely suggestions based on 40 years of observation. If you think you have a contentious hearing, my recommendation is that you start either in, within the confines of the hearing, meaning the chairman is gavel to hearing open, or otherwise a certain length of meeting at that time. Start with a presentation from the applicant. Have the applicant using a board, I'm sorry, I don't mean board type action. This is wanting to be close to these lovely ladies. Uh, one of those easel things, you know? And have him put it on the board, and have him make the presentation from there so that the audience can hear, the board can hear. And have him basically give a thumbnail sketch of what he's looking to do. Now, the board will undoubtedly have some questions. Ask them. The board can ask questions at any time. Board should ask questions. Well, what's that little box up in the upper right-hand corner? What's that all for? Is that a catchphrase? And what is it? Describe the process for the benefit of the public. Now, most people who are there just because it's not my backyard, NIMBY, Alberta NIMBY. You ever heard of Banana? Oh, that's my favorite. You know what the NIMBY advocate is? Not in my backyard, NIMBY. Advocated by many homeowners groups and associations who simply don't like it. They're looking at that cornfield out back, and they wanted to stay cornfield instead of the subdivision. That's NIMBY. My favorite is Banana. Build absolutely nothing anywhere near anyone. And any of that. So, if you're looking to get constructive input from the residents, they should learn a little something about the application. Thanks for my suggestion. So, the gavel open the hearing. Once again, common sense, if the hearing consists of three people, and everybody knows each other, and are all civil with each other, who worries about formal rules? You know, the chair recognizes them, you speak, and everybody knows, everybody go ahead. If you don't, like we had the last hearing in Dock Lake on the big project, 100 people there, and they all have their say, and they want to say it. You got to establish some rules to govern the process. When you get into that sort of contentious hearing, or potentially contentious hearing, I recommend, again, to follow. First, whatever rules the chair and the board set should be reasonable. You know, you can't say, okay, you're going to be given 15 seconds, and then move it out. That's, nobody, people can't even say, hold on 15 seconds. It's got to be reasonable. Two minutes, three minutes, five minutes? Depends on the size of the crowd. And how many other cases we got on the calendar that night? Recognizing that even if you don't conclude the hearing tonight, you can always adjourn it, and have them come back in another one if you have to. So, um, two minutes to three minutes is kind of the common limit. Tell them you're going to let them know when there's one minute left, 30 seconds left, and then bring the gavel down to three minutes. Again, using common sense, if you can tell they're about to conclude, you let them go an extra 10 seconds, 15 seconds, because you don't want to have angry people. If they keep rambling on, chairman bang the gavel and say, thank you, next. Second, do not, do not engage in dialogue, or allow the applicant to engage in dialogue with the applicants, or the residents, right? Residents come up and say, I have a question I want to ask the applicant. Bang the gavel. No ma'am, no sir. If you have a question, you address it to the board. If the board believes it worthy of an answer at this time, the board will solicit the answer. Or would not have any dialogue between the applicants and the residents. Thirdly, do not, as a general proposition, answer the residents' questions. Once again, common sense. If they're asking, uh, what time are you meeting again next week? Answer the question. You know, if they're asking you, well, what are you gonna use as a criteria to determine the traffic impact for this project? Well, let them wait and see. Don't answer. Simply say, thank you, Mr. Smith, we appreciate your kindness, and move on to the next one. I'll tell you a story, a true story. How many of you have ever been to the Gilderlin Mall in Repalvane? Right there by the thruway and all that really big mall? Well, believe me when I tell you that was a contentious project. I was about that, kind of back now, thirty-five years, four years, sorry, hometown. I won't tell you the whole story, I'll simply say this. In that town, the ultimate approval was granted by the town board through a special permit. The town board had a hearing. Gilderlin is a community of suburb of Repalvane that is populated by, gotta be eighty-five percent of the professorial types involved in the state university system. I never saw so many PhDs and, they won't. The public hearing was moved into an auditorium. This room would have fit into about a third of the auditorium, okay? And it was bad, SRO, standing room. Board was up on that, like this. Entire front row was, I hadn't been representing the developer at that time, one of the people. We were all of us in our three-piece suits, sitting down. We went through about an hour and a half presentation to the board, then the chair, gavel, here's the opening. Gavel, gavel, open, nothing seen. And he laid out the rules, said, everybody's gonna be giving two names, I'm open to it. Now, if you haven't signed up, talk. Sign up, walk over here quietly and sign up, 'cause only people who's on this list are gonna be allowed to talk. So, if you wanna talk, put your name and address on this list. I'm gonna call the board. We're just gonna be giving two minutes, you'll be told one minute left, thirty seconds left. If you have a hearing, I'm sounding gavel and you must ready to push the microphone. Please keep on point, please be polite. I will not tolerate shouting, profanity, or anything of the like. Everybody got the rules? Open the hearing. Now, more than sitting in my backyard. First, we have one microphone in the middle, they call one person and they call you, Mr. Jones, Ms. Smith, you're next, so in line, please. Mr. Jones steps up. About the fourth or fifth person, some guy starts talking and screaming in the mic. Chair bangs the supervisor, bangs the gavel down and says, sir. Keep your voice down, make your point, please. Go to the mic. You gotta come down. Finish this. Now, the three or four people go on. Another guy gets up and starts screaming in the hall. Chairman says, this hearing is closed. Boom! The board gets up, walks off the daisies, leaves three thousand high-risk residents in the audience. True story. All of us know he didn't close the meeting. He closed the hearing. So, we sat right there. Took an hour and a half for the hall to clear. When the hall finally cleared, the board came back out, re-completed the meeting, granted the special permit, and the mall got built.
Did the people that were there, did they realize that the board was coming back?
I don't know, I didn't ask. Do you have a question? That the board, the people that were there know that the board was coming back? I don't know, they didn't ask. Had they asked, they would've gotten the answer, I'm sure, but they didn't.
Let me just ask you anyway. If the applicant meets all the requirements of the planning board, just like Lender you, and the people come in as a public hearing, and it's not in my backyard, can you hear all their concern? Then it's gonna be granted, correct? Then, then, then it's gonna be granted by the board, right, correct?
Did y'all hear his question? Did y'all hear? Let me see if I can answer your question this way. Again, a true statement, I couldn't go find an answer. Told you I've been in the Dona Clay for forty-four years. I told you big and twice enough, I told you how many cases we have. Let me tell you one other thing. In those forty-four years, we have never, not once denied a site plan, ever. The site plan, in my humble opinion, I'm not saying this is the law, this is my opinion, to do fidelity to the statute, a site plan should never be denied. That's because, A, it's a permitted use, subject-only site plan. What is site plan? Site plan is arrangement, layout, and design. That's all site plan is. Now, I'm not saying that if an applicant comes in and wants a five-thousand-square-foot retail store on a five-thousand-one-hundred-foot lot, you should give it to him. Okay? I'm not saying that in all of those cases in the Dona Clay, the final approved product looked a hell of a lot like what the applicant was asking for at the outset. Okay? Because that would be aggregating the planning board's responsibility to address in a meaningful way arrangement, layout, and designing. And that includes compatibility. Can you give the applicant local parking spaces? Can you meet the setback requirements? Can you provide these level buffers? Okay? All of those things are part of the site plan process, and the planning board has authority to impose those as conditions, including the ability to reduce the requested size of the building that the applicant is after, or take the building and rotate it ninety degrees, or move it from this part of the site to that part of the site. He may not like it, but as long as you've got a reasonable and rational basis for that conclusion based on the evidence presented, you will not go overturned by the court. Because you're granting him the right to do what he wants in a reasonable manner consistent with your regulations. Now, let me tell you what will be overturned. If you say, the applicant proposes, um, let me say something that's not outrageous. A, um... Is it a blue swoop that one of those electronic companies uses as a logo? I, I, well, let me see if I can come up with another thing. An applicant proposes a building that is puce. Is puce an ugly color? He proposes a paint-filled building, puce. You're not typically happy about it. Can you refuse to grant him approval? Or can you mandate that he paint this building brown, not puce? It's a sticky question. If you have architectural standards as part of your site plan process, and if he is not in compliance with those architectural standards, then maybe you can tell him no. But just because you think puce is an ugly color, or you think that building does not need that cupola on top, even though it's within the height requirements of the code, and you want to deny it on that basis, you're in deep water. And architectural standards in most places in New York are very problematic to justify. You've got to be in places like, and you probably know more up around here than I do, but like, uh, where the Olympics is held, uh, Play Classic or Round Island, the village of Skinniavas, okay? There is a distinct architectural theme throughout the commercial portion of that little village. And if somebody proposed to come in and do a five-story glass, that would really adversely affect the ambience and the tourism that people come to be. I mean, I don't know if you know Skinniavas, but they actually hired like fifteen or twenty people for the winter season, were welcome in Finkens costumes and Saint Gerols and, you know, deep people, but not out there. New, good man. Some are hired, some are volunteers. On the other hand, a hand will, they're a cost of twelve thousand fifty cents too, but that's, you know, that's what you did, I'm a little geeky. But that's what it's about. In other words, any regulation must advance a legitimate governmental concern in order to be a valid regulation. But you must have a regulation in order to justify your determinations. I'm coming back full circle to, the question was really applied. Public opinion qua public opinion, per se, not looking at its content, its substance, just the fact that people are outraged and don't like it, is legally meaningless. You're obligated to ignore it if it doesn't bear on the regulations that you are administering. Now, that, that mouthful, like I said, was a very big mouthful, a number of ifs. The mere fact that a resident stands up and says, I think it's gonna adversely affect my property and I'm a debt not supposed to it, and they bring their neighbor who says, I have a successful friend of mine look at it and he told me my property value is gonna go down by thirty percent. All of this, pure conjecture, is meaningless. It is required to be ignored, they're ignored. Now, if expert testimony is in fact presented in documentary form, that can be presented to the other side, to the but, that may be a reference to it. But you see what I'm saying here? Pure opinion, pure public comment is meaningless. It should be respectfully received and say, thank you ma'am, and move on. I wouldn't suggest that you say, that's nonsense, and, you know, send it out. Uh, by the way, that town board in Gilderlin, it didn't give you a life. Let me guess, did you hear?
Is there a timeline for site plan? Somebody comes, advocate comes to, uh, for their property, you wanna put, like a lawn or a boney, um, business in there and then it never happens?
Oh, yes, it's called the sunset clause. The question she asked is, is there a timeline when you grant the site plan approval and for an add or special permit or other kinds of relief? Is there a timeline beyond which the applicant loses the right, if not exercised or utilized? The answer is, as a general proposition, no. However, you can, as a matter of routine, assuming it's reasonable, provide as a condition of your approval what's known as a sunset clause. You can say, and the rights hereby granted shall automatically expire one year from today if you haven't applied for the permit or the certificate of zoning occupancy or whatever. As long as you understand that just because those rights expire does not mean that the applicant shouldn't be granted upon the reapplication, and you've got a much, much more difficult time saying why a year from now than you should reach the same conclusion you reached before. And they have to resubmit, it, what's that, that may have to have a new hearing, you know? That's a function of how your regulation is for you. You don't necessarily have to have a new hearing. You don't necessarily have to have a new fee. You can, but you're not required. In fact, most of the more sophisticated co-tying draft with respect to sunset clauses say you can have an additional similar period upon the mere ministerial application at least thirty days in advance of the expiration time period, giving the municipality time to look at the facts and circumstances to see if the situation in the neighborhood has changed. Because that's really what you're doing with the sunset clause. If it's lawful to do today and the ordinance has changed, it's gonna be a lawful year from today, unless circumstances have occurred that would call into question the wisdom of your original rule. One of those circumstances might be, by the way, a textual change. Town board in the meantime increases the minimum lot size from one meter to two. If the guy did not avail himself of his rights within that period and the new law came into effect, he's not gonna comply with the new law unless you have a pre-existing non-performing law record exception. Do you remember that, guys, a lot of the picks got that? There was a, there was a question earlier?
Suppose the applicant, um, does not fulfill the requirements?
Oh, yeah, I liked it. That was gonna lead with that, I forgot all about it. How many of you think the planning board has enforcement authority? Some applicant comes to you and gets approval. You grant the site plan approval on the condition that no more than four automobiles are displayed on this property in a one yard at a time. You drove by there last week and there's twelve cars there. What can you do about it? Jesus, you guys have really trained these people, haven't you, for years? You're absolutely right. Zone planning boards have zero enforcement authority. By the way, neither do the zoning board's appeals. Only the zoning enforcement officer or the town board has enforcement authority. Doesn't mean that you cannot, as a planning board member or as a board of appeals member or the board as a whole, point out to the zoning enforcement officer something you have observed and suggested that in between, that there is a violation extant on this property. Then the zoning enforcement officer goes and takes a look, and he or she concludes that there is or is not a violation, and then the process ensues in there. But you evidently have no authority. And I don't even go so far as to say, other than being piqued at the fact that the applicant ignored you, you're really sitting here and be upset about it. Because the level of enforcement that a town chooses or a village is up to the elected officials in that town, and that's intentional. Now, you may have legitimately fixed to say, well, if you're coming on zoning and they're not gonna enforce it by platter. Point taken. Can't argue with you. But they're the ones that have to stand for election every four years or three years. They're the ones that have to answer to the voters, aren't you guys?
Are the towns regulated to have public health officer or can the town board have health officers?
You're, you're straying the field. Uh, the question was, can, can the, uh, can the town board have a health officer? That varies county by county, in Ithaca County, for instance. Health officers were usually authorized by the public health office, and every, the local town doctor was the town health officer. And the local town doctor issued the septic tank permits when septic, when they went from outhouse to septic tanks. He was the one that looked at and took into the sanitary provisions. In most areas, down where I am, all of that has been created by the county board of health. And there aren't more local health officers, they're all done by the county board of health. I don't honestly even know what the prevailing system is up here. I could say if the laws are still on the books, but whether you use local health but whether you use local health officers or whether you use the county health department or the state health department as your... It's typically from a planning board, you know, the only place that plays a role is approval of water supplies, approval of septic, septic designs and sewer systems. And I honestly don't know how you guys do it up here. I should, but I don't. The state doesn't know that. Next one.
As an attorney, do you attend all planning board meetings?
I do by preference, well, with a couple of exceptions. Couple of my planning boards wish to have me be on as call basis, which pays site to it by hour. Here's my unsolicited... You know what they say about unsolicited opinions? They're worth exactly what you pay for. Here's my unsolicited opinion. It's been my experience, especially in the municipality with the occasional contentious matters. It actually costs the municipality less depending on an annual basis to attend all the meetings because I cut the problems off at the knees before they get started. One of the municipalities that had recently changed from an annual regener basis to an as-needed non-call basis was that unnamed municipality I told you about, where there was a local law that was done that was suspect in an application. Remember the one I was talking about? It was suspect, the procedures weren't done right, and I advised them that they should do it over again. They have paid me in the last four months almost twice what my annual regener would have been because they think I'm paying them by the hour now. And when they pay me by the hour, I get paid portal to portal. I get paid until I leave my house until the time I get back to my house. And I'm not hosing them, I'm not doing it to be spiteful. Had I been at that meeting, the procedural problems would never have occurred in the first place.
We've been lucky. We've had an attorney at our board in the last twenty-five years.
And in small municipalities, you could probably get away with that more often than not. And you probably haven't had a lot of really contentious proceedings where both the applicant showed up with his attorney, his engineer, and his lawyer, and a well-funded homeowners group showed up with their lawyer. That's the kind of situation that you would really need to have your counsel present. If you're only doing routine site plans and routine subdivisions, two lots without public utilities and that kind of stuff, there's not a lot of places where you'd go anywhere. Do it easily.
What would be a fair regener to have an attorney there? What would...
There is all of the... I can tell you, I'd be very candid with you. I'll tell you some of my cases. Some of my small municipalities, what about twelve K or... That's my attending all the planning orgies or all the ZMAs. Where I represent small communities, we're talking seven to nine thousand dollars, and I represent all the boards, the numbers range between twenty-five and thirty-five K. See, that's the secret. You get the old... Maybe they don't give a damn anymore. So, by the way, there are ways to recoup legal and engineering expenses. Now, this is a very slippery slope, and I'm going to warn you about it. If your municipality just wants the cost of legal and/or engineering services to adversely impact the budget and the taxpayers, there is a way to do it. There's several ways to do it. One of which is legal and one of which is unlawful. Unfortunately, the unlawful form is what prevails in this area. There was a case called Jewish Reconstructionist City Hall versus the Village of Roswell in Harlem, court of appeals case, which pronounced the unconstitutionality of the system that is utilized by many municipalities up here. And I came to say, um, I'm not going to comment. That system starts with a statute that says an applicant or donor like subdivision site plan shall, as part of the application process, deposit tax dollars to be held in escrow account, to be dispersed by the municipality, to pay for, again, donor like, the legal or engineering fees associated with the review of that particular project. Statute was on this thing. Now, when it is those fees are exceeded the funds deposited, the applicant, as a condition of the obligation to continue consideration of the project, must replenish those fees. That's what I call the developer's deposit process. It is unconstitutional. It is illegal. The town of Henderson learned that some years ago and was required to pay my client back all the money my client paid him for legal and engineering fees. Association Outcase, y'all remember? I appreciate it. It's illegal. And what's even more important, it's wrong. We never talk about that anymore. We talk about legal ability. We don't talk about right and wrong. It's wrong. And I'll tell you why it's wrong. You're giving those lawyers and those engineers a license to print money without any accountability. They can charge any damn thing they want. And by the way, I'm not suggesting here that the attorneys involved in that case were engaged in that activity. My discretion. But I'm telling you, this process sets in motion that without any accountability, the applicant... Remember, applicants do this stuff. They develop, they build, because they want to make about that. What's important to them? That at the end of the day, are they going to make up about that? In order to reach that conclusion, they need to know how much it's going to cost. And they bunch everything. They bunch up the concrete, the chimp road, the dirt work, blah, blah, engineering, and legal expenses. Without naming the municipality, I will tell you, there is a municipality in the broad central New York area that for years and years and years was lending about a hundred grand for legal services. Big municipality. And about two-hundred-and-fifty K for its engineering services. It had the developer's deposit process. Trying to think of what I can and can't say. They hired an attorney that did not engage in the developer's process. The cost of legal service during that time went down dramatically. The number of applications went up dramatically. They then terminated that attorney, and they went back to the original developer's deposit process with a politically connected attorney and engineer. In one year, the attorney's fees went from a hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars, and in that same year, the engineering fees went from two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to two million. Just tell them, it happens. None of that came out of the taxpayers' pocket. It came out of the developer's pocket. It's unconstitutional. However, here's the good news. There is another way to solve that dilemma. That is to do what I've done in a couple of cases. I say, "Look, town of Baton Rouge, I really think you and I would be better served by having me on an annual regener. But I need to be reasonably compensated, and you're just paying your attorney two thousand dollars a year, and I'm telling you, I can't do it for two grand. But here's what I built it. I'll take a look at your last five years of applications and stuff, and I'll come up with a flat fee per case. I will say to you, for a subdivision of two lots or less, my fee will be two hundred bucks. Not two-hundred-and-five, not one-hundred-and-ninety-five. You'll collect from the applicant two hundred dollars. I'll get that two hundred bucks whether it takes me one meeting or two years. But that is similar list based on some stratations of all the kinds of activities that they get." And I said, "No, look. I want to feed my family. If I've got to guarantee you a flat fee, I'm going to build in there enough so that I'm reasonably comfortable that it's going to work out right." Recognizing the fundamentally true principle that pigs get fat and hogs get slaughtered. So what does that mean? That means be a pig, but don't be all. So I put the numbers at a point where I was reasonably confident at the end of the year I was going to be comfortable, with the understanding that we both review those fees and change them up or change them down at the end of the year if they need changing. They don't have it. I laid out like a fat rat in a cheese pack. And development increased dramatically because the developers knew that when I raised a question and thought of a planning board that cost them more time and money and energy, they knew I wasn't doing it just to fatten my wallet because I wasn't getting a little more. They knew it was really an issue they had to be resolved. Whereas if I'm sitting there and I say, "Wait a minute. We've got to delay this process for a week and a half because we forgot to dot the side across that tee." My advice to my board is automatically sus- because they know that means I'm going to be adding another twelve hours of billable time that they got to pay for. And it's true with the engineers, and it's true with lawyers, and it's a real problem. So, that's one way to deal with it, is to require that your engineer or your attorney give you a flat fee. If they're willing to give you that as table, adjustable area, semi-annual, that'd work. When I ran into another couple, the engineers that I would deal with and have dealt with over the years said, "Look, we can't do that by lawyer's strength. There's so much complexity in these applications and such a great difference in the quality of submissions that the amount of engineering services... We just can't give you a set formula, so much for this kind of a project, so much for that. So we just can't participate in that kind of a process." Well, I can come up with a solution for that too. It delays the process by a month, but it works. You amend the code to say that upon receipt of an application, that application along with the referred to this one and that one you're going to be talking about also gets referred to the engineer appear twice. And that engineer actually has the application of the applicant. And you say to him, "Mr. Engineer, how much for that application?" Now, you can't say, "Well, I don't know what the quality of the submission is." Because you've got the submission. They'll come back with a number. Costs you twelve grand. The board looks at that estimate, concludes that it's reasonable, and says to the applicant, "Engineering will cost you twelve K. You want to proceed or not?" That's a way to get your professionals compensated without adversely affecting your municipal budget. Does it make sense to you? Makes sense to me. Because I'm all for paying the lawyers and engineers, I really am. Well, yeah. Self-serving, though, maybe. We already did it. I'm sorry. I do this all the time. I ask you. So...
Where that two hours went fast, didn't it?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're in a good audience. I interacted, I hope I answered some of your questions.
Thank you, Scott.